Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to our June 7, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. We call it order. We have a quorum here today and approval of the minutes from the April 19, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. We have seven public hearings today. First public hearing is zoning application for approximately 13.9 acres located along North Tennessee Boulevard to be rezoned from CF to PRD. Old South Properties is the applicant. B zoning application for approximately 7.2 acres located along White Popular Court to be rezoned RS 15 to PRD, Richard Reeves applicant. C zoning application for approximately 43.2 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Bond Road to be rezoned for RS 15 to CH, Joy Pratt Hort applicant. Annexation plan of services, annexation petition for approximately 400 linear feet up on Emery Road way, right away, City of Murfreesboro Engineering Department applicant. PSO amendment for approximately 70.7 acres to amend, St. Thomas Relford Hospital, PSO, St. Thomas Relford Hospital applicant. Zoning application for approximately 6.11 acres located along Jackson Allen Drive, Susanna Landon Drive to be rezoned, PCD to PRD, Land Questor LC applicant. Proposed amendment zoning ordinance regarding Section 4 Comprehensive Plan Procedures, City of Murfreesboro Planning and Legal Department applicants. So when we open up our public hearing today, per your instructions, if you're coming as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're coming as a group, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address when you're speaking to the commission. Donald?
Thank you, sir, and good evening, everyone. This is the zoning application for 13.9 acres. The last time that we talked about this project was to set a public hearing, and I think at that time, the project was called Bear Branch Point. It has since been renamed Brookwood Point. It's located along North Tennessee Boulevard, about 400 feet north of the intersection of North Tennessee Boulevard and East Northfield Boulevard. The property is currently undeveloped, and it is zoned Commercial Fringe, or CF. Old South Properties wishes to rezone the property to PRD, or Planned Residential District, to allow an 82-unit townhouse development. The gross density of that development would be approximately 5.9 acres, excuse me, 5.9 units per acre. The townhouses would be spread across 22 buildings. The adjacent zoning includes RV to the north and northeast, RM 16 to the east, PRD to the west, and CF to the south. Adjacent land uses include single-family residential on the north and northeast, multifamily on the east, townhouses on the west, and undeveloped property on the south. The development proposed by the applicant would include a type-C buffer along the north and northeast boundary of the property between the proposed new development and the Northwoods subdivision. The applicant, Old South Properties, is represented by Matt Taylor from SEC, who will make a presentation and give more details on this project. The Planning Commission should hold a public hearing, make a recommendation to the city council. Staff can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Good evening, Chairman Wade, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Matt Taylor from SEC, and I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Floyd of Old South Properties, the applicant on the project. We're here tonight to present the rezoning request for the Brookwood Point development. As Donald said, this property is located along the north side of North Tennessee Boulevard, just to the north of its intersection with Northfield Boulevard. The site is just under 14 acres in size. The eastern half approximately is covered in fairly dense hardwoods, while the western half has some existing stockpile soil from previous construction projects in the area, as well as some scrub that has grown up in that area. Utilities are primarily located along North Tennessee Boulevard. We do have a sewer stub at our northeast property corner that we intend to connect Existing zoning's in the area. The property itself is zoned Commercial Fringe, or CF. To the west, we have PRD zoning for existing townhomes. A little further west of that is RM 16, which are some existing apartments. To the south is additional Commercial Fringe property. To the north is RV and RS 12, which was developed as the Northwoods subdivision. To the east is more RM 16, which was developed as townhomes and apartments. Here's a picture looking back east along North Tennessee Boulevard. Our property would be to the left of this particular picture. This is some of the existing stockpile I had mentioned earlier, and this is looking into that dense vegetation. You can start to see some of the height of the hardwoods in the distance. The plan itself is proposed to be PRD zoning, which would allow us to build up to 82 townhomes for a density of 5.9 units per acre, as Mr. Anthony said. All of our utilities here would be underground. We have proposed one access point, and it would be off of North Tennessee Boulevard. None of the other properties around us have stubbed toward us, and they're all developed, so that would be our only access. We have planned a landscape buffer on the north side where we had joined Northwoods Development. It would be a type-C buffer there as well. All of our units along that property line would be offset from the property line 20 to 25 feet at a minimum. We've also planned a decorative landscaping and fencing along North Tennessee Boulevard. This would not be identical to what is out there on our neighbors to the west, but it would be similar in nature, to try to create a sense of community and some cohesiveness as you drive down this road. The units are just over 1,500 square feet in size and go up to about 2,250 and above. All of our streets here would be private streets, be maintained by the HOA. We've dedicated five to six locations throughout the site with five to six visitor parking spaces in each one of those. Tried to spread those out so they were convenient for the residents, as well as their guests in the future. All these units have two-car garages, as well as two parking spaces in the driveway for ample parking throughout. Every owner here will have to be required to be a member of the HOA. That HOA will be run and organized by a third-party management company, who will maintain basically everything outside the four walls of the unit themselves. The roads, the detention, the landscaping, anything that's not inside those four walls. All the owners here, all the units, will be transferred and established through a horizontal property regime to be sold to individual owners. We have created a very walkable community, we believe. We've got sidewalks on both sides of all the streets, as well as walking trail through the open space that's connected to that sidewalk network throughout. Solid waste will be handled through individual carts, which will be kept in the owner's garage, and picked up through a private hauler, not through the city's public service. The units themselves are a mixture of one- and two-story homes. All the master suites are down. As well, they'll each have some outdoor living space, either through a sunroom or a screened-in porch. With that master down, it is very much geared toward that older empty nester. All the quality materials we'll use here, brick, stone, fiber cement board, the only vinyl you'll see here is in the trim and soffit areas. This picture here is the exact same thing we'll build. This is actually being built currently in Rockbridge Cove, which is located off of Last Cassis Highway near Garrison Cove. You can see the detail on the varying roofline, the varying front elevations, the stonework around the garage door and up the side, and the muted garage door itself, so it doesn't stand out. Then we carry those same materials to the rear and the sides, and you can see some of the outdoor living area options there. Amenities, we feel like they start at the entrance with a nice monument sign and landscaping around that sign to establish that sense of community. On the opposite side of that road will be our walking trail and sitting areas to try to create some social hours, social time, as well as some exercise along that walking trail. As I mentioned earlier, we want to do some decorative fencing and landscaping along North Tennessee to try to create some cohesiveness along North Tennessee, but set ourselves apart with a little variation in design. An access point would be on the western portion of the property, off North Tennessee Boulevard, away from the curve and in between, actually in between two curves there, but away from the signal as far as possible. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on May 8. We had about 15 to 20 of our neighbors in attendance that night, fairly well attended, based on the number of invites that we had sent out. We thought we had some good dialogue. One of the main points that we carried away from that meeting was regarding drainage. Several of the neighbors within Northwoods have existing drainage problems at their homes. We ensured the neighbors that we would not make that any worse with our development, and we would strive to help to improve their situation if we could with our development. And we committed to them that night. We would do a preliminary grading plan prior to tonight's meeting, and then sit down with city engineering staff to review that and make sure that we were both on the same page as far as the plan was headed in the right direction. And so we have done that. City staff can speak for themselves, but our meeting went well. I think that we are on the right path. We still got a few details to work out, but we would do that at the site plan stage with full design and calculations there. So myself or Mr. Floyd will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, let's open up our public hearing.
My name is Fred Marino. I live at 2009 Terra Green Court, just behind this proposed development. We live in a community like many areas of Murfreesboro that are densely bedrooms, and we don't have very many services. We, my wife and I enjoy walking the dog down to one of the few we have, a family video, and we can get a video for the night. There's not much else, except for a tobacco store and a pizza parlor, which we have delivered. This was a planned community, I thought, when we bought this. We had a nice mixture. We have college apartments, which my daughter lived in for a couple of years, I think. There's sort of the same development adjacent to this proposed development, and then there was Commercial Fringe, which I thought could bring some really nice things to our community. Mr. Taylor keeps talking about community, but I don't see how we're ever going to commune with the people who'll be moving into these homes. There's very little open space. There's not anywhere to get together. That's what this should have been. The Commercial Fringe might have been a coffee shop, might have been a restaurant. It might have been a Dollar General for those poor kids that are landlocked across the street. It could have been a lot of things, but it looks like it's going to be 82 townhomes, 150 people, maybe more, maybe less. It doesn't give us a community. It just gives us more bedrooms. I really, I really see some of these new developments, like across from the avenue. Those people can leave their door and walk to a restaurant. They can walk to a bar. They can walk to a barber shop, a dry cleaner. We can't. We're stuck. The closest thing we have is miles away, other than the video store and the pizza parlor. I would really like to have services there, more than I'd like to have more people sleeping. So I strongly encourage you, leave this Commercial Fringe. Give us a chance to have a community, have a coffee shop where we can get together with our neighbors. It may not happen. I don't know what will go in there, but I do know that this is just more of the same. So thanks for hearing me. I hope that you'll consider that, and where Murfreesboro is headed, and how we make it a better place and more bedrooms. It may not be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marino.
My name is Steve Nix. I am at 1805 Mosaic Trail. It's in the very back of Northwoods. And the dense hardwoods that were mentioned by Mr. Taylor are actually in my backyard, and I look out my back into the dense hardwoods. I also look out my back door into a wetlands area. The original plat that I received when I bought that property, in fact, most of my backyard is in a wetlands. This wetlands actually is the drainage easement for Northwoods Manor. There's two 20-foot drainage easements on either side of my house. When Northwoods Manor was developed, it was poorly done, and there was no underground water. There's no underground place for the water to go. It all drains down through two concrete ditches on both sides of my house, which then drains into my backyard and then into this wetlands area. And I was one of the strong opponents of this development, just because of the water issues. It's the middle of June. I still cannot mow my backyard because it's full of water, because I collect all the water for everybody in the neighborhood. We've talked about addressing the water issues, and I certainly hope we do. It would certainly help me. I just ask that you guys take into consideration the poor design of Northwoods, that there is no underground sewer to collect the water. All that water collects into my backyard and then into this new development here. So I was told, much like most of my neighbors, this was a federally designated wetlands. The property was purchased that way. I called, in fact, asking if I could build a pool, and I was told, well, you cannot alter this property because of the drainage issues, because it is a wetland. So, you know, the site plan, we have, there is a retention pond, but it is on the front end of the property. We had asked during the meeting at Pittard that we may look at putting that drainage or that retention pond to the rear of the property to help. I was told that probably not, but that would be considered, and I understand that the engineering department has looked at what we can do to help the water. So initially, you know, I would say that I'm opposed to this, because, you know, I like where I live. I like watching the deer in my backyard. I like watching these 100-year-old oak trees sway in the wind. I don't particularly want to look out my back door and see a bunch of apartment homes, if you will. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nix. Public hearing is...
My name's James Dunleavy, 2013 Terra Green Court. The only thing I'm, unlike the other two gentlemen, I jumped. When I bought the house, I moved from California, and I liked the house because of the area that's in the back. You know, I don't need to live in another overdeveloped area. I got left in California. That's one of the reasons I bought this property. But if it's going to be built, the gentleman in the white shirt over there at our last meeting said he would make it a 55 and older community. So if it's going to, if you guys are going to rezone it, make him live up to his word.
Thank you. All right, public hearing is closed. Staff?
I don't have a whole lot to respond to. I don't know if Matt wants to come back up and address the wetlands issue or the drainage or...
Drainage. Yes, the wetlands, he's correct. At one point, it was classified as wetlands, but the current landowner had a reevaluation done within the past couple of years, and the hydrology has changed in the area, and so it's no longer classified as wetlands. We have actually shared that report with some of the owners within Northwoods, and I would assume he has shared that with the others. So I shared that with email I had. So we've already had that part checked out. And the 55-plus, Mr. Floyd had indicated previously at the neighborhood meeting that he was fine with that stipulation and continues to be fine with that stipulation.
How do you enforce that?
It actually becomes a deed restriction. It's part of the, Mr. Oss could probably tell you the act, but I think it's in the older person's act, if I'm not mistaken, but I could be wrong about that.
I have not dealt with that specifically. I know that you can, if you're proper, can actually limit his property to an age area and to an over 55. I have not seen one that was actually done. Most of them are age-targeted, where the way they structured and the, you know, the facilities make it more attractive to older folks, us older folks, than to young families. But if Mr. Floyd has a proposal to actually make it age-restricted, then he can do that. There are legal mechanisms available to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Matt, are you comfortable that the water that's in this wetland area is going to drain towards your retention pond or detention pond?
Yes, sir. We're, that side of the property, we're actually planning to raise three to four feet. We know that that has to be done, because it's flat and it just won't drain otherwise. We know we've got to undercut some there, because, I mean, it's, even though it's not wetland anymore, it's still not compactable, buildable soil to begin with. So we've got to take that out and bring shot rock back in, is what we're going to do, and make it a functional piece of property. And then we'll use storm pipe and actually constructed ditches to direct the stormwater toward our pond, and ultimately it discharges back to the northeast through the existing townhomes and apartments before it gets back to Bear Branch.
One thing I'm almost sure of is that water's going to run downhill.
Yes, sir.
Are you comfortable that the pond is lower than where the wetland area is when you get it constructed?
Yes, sir. We can, we can make that work. We've already done our survey on site and already looked at the slopes from our pond over to the discharge point, and we can make that work.
And by raising it four feet, we're not talking about raising it four feet where it's going to put a dam at the back of his property and restrict that, that water. We can't release any water towards him by any means, because...
We can't, we can't put any more water on him, and we, if his water's coming toward us, we have to allow it to still come that way. That's right.
So...
Any more questions, Mr. Taylor?
By it being townhomes and privately-owned individual units, you're really targeting a market anyways, because college students aren't going to come to town and purchase a townhome, most likely to live in.
That's right. And that was a concern at the neighborhood meeting that we had talked through with, you know, we've got a very good model of what this is going to cost and what our demographic is within spitting distance of here, over on Last Cassis. And so we know who's going to come move in here, and they're all the 55-plus. That's why Old South did not have an issue restricting that, because they know who's going to move in here. And they, you know, somebody had asked about restricting against rental. Well, there's no reason to do that, because the price point is already such that those numbers don't work. So the market takes care of that.
What is the price?
I believe that the most recent ones have been creeping toward 300,000, and prices seem to continue to go up, so we're looking toward that price range. So it's not cheap by any means.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Commission? Motion?
Well, as always, I think we're looking at a situation where if you've got a field in your backyard, and you've had the deer and the antelope playing back there, it's something that you're going to miss if they put apartments back there, or condos or townhomes, or whatever they put back there, or whether they put a Publix grocery store back there with loading docks and everything. It could be worse. I mean, it's a, it's a situation where people are coming to Murfreesboro. We know they're coming. They have to have a place to live. We can't go outward anymore, so we're going to have to continue to accept the fact that Murfreesboro is going to become more and more dense as time goes by, and we just don't have any choice on that. But, and there's a reason that Murfreesboro is the 10th fastest-growing city in the United States, and it's because it's a desirable place to be. I mean, wealth of life here is what I consider phenomenal. The project, I think it's got potential of improving the water situation. It does appear that there's at least a price point on these properties that will attract your higher-end buyers, and so I think that it's a good opportunity to take the situation and certainly try and, try and make things better, or at least be the best use for the property. And with that, I'll make the motion to approve.
A second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right. Motion... All right. Motion carries. Zoning application for approximately 7.2 acres located along Robert, I mean White-Poplar Court to be rezoned RS-15 to PRD. Richard Reeves, applicant. Mr. Donald?
Thank you, sir. This property is located along White-Poplar Court, which is east of Pitts Lane and southwest of Oakland High School. The property is currently undeveloped except for White-Poplar Court itself, which has been constructed. The property is zoned RS-15. A plat for 17 single-family lots on this property was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and was subsequently recorded in 2016. Reeves Properties wishes to rezone the property to PRD or Planned Residential District to allow a 32-unit, single-family detached residential development on this property. The gross density would be 3.46 units per acre. The proposed development would be recorded, I believe, as a horizontal property regime and the entire development would be one lot of record. The adjacent zoning includes RD to the east and RS-15 on the northwest and south. Adjacent land uses include zero lot-line residential on the east and single-family residential on the northwest and south. We have received correspondence from a neighboring property owner, which we've distributed to you. John Gordon from Wiser Consultants is here to represent the applicant and talk more about the project. We would ask Mr. Gordon to discuss the project in more detail, including the common open space and particularly what would be permissible in the backyards. And Mr. Alcorn may want to speak to that as well. The Planning Commission should hold a public hearing and then make a recommendation for the city council and staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. My name's John Gordon. I'm the engineer for this project. This is Poplar Grove. It's a redevelopment of the Tulip-Poplar subdivision that was 17 lots zoned RS-15 and this redevelopment will be horizontal property regime of 32 homes on the same property. It uses the same existing roadway and utilities that were put in place for the original subdivision.
Are you able?
Yeah, trying to get the slideshow to start. It should be that one, but... And just go space. Okay. This is, this is the layout for the project using existing White-Poplar Court. And the location is off of Pitts Lane in an area that's already a residential area near Oakland High School and there's also other schools in the area. These are the trees that were saved originally for the project. That's the tie-in to the old Tulip-Poplar name and also the Poplar Grove name of the new development. So we have 32 homes on this with three common areas, including a pavilion at the back of the cul-de-sac. The houses will be single-family residential. They'll have brick and stone exteriors with accents, brick, stone, and hardy. And we have some samples here of the home elevations and these are detailed in the rezoning book also. Here are some examples from a... Examples from a similar subdivision, which, or similar project, which is what the Poplar Grove project is based on and that's the retreat at Merrimont. So here's a photo of that existing project where they have over 50 homes already constructed. And it shows that the, the concept of what we are going to be constructing at Poplar Grove. This is the pavilion at Retreat at Merrimont, which we'll do a similar pavilion at Poplar Grove. Another view of the pavilion. And then some more examples of the, the front elevations of the houses at the retreat, which, like I said, all of these are defined in the, in the rezoning book with the homes that, that could be done with the home elevations. And I realize that's a short version, but if you have any questions, I'd like to take those. Also to, maybe to start off first, though, to address the comments that we had going all the way back to the neighborhood meeting. There have been comments about providing additional landscaping along the property lines with the surrounding subdivisions. We have on some of those property lines existing mature tree lines and, and those large trees are already in place and we plan to supplement that with additional landscaping. And our plan is to use landscaping that will be constructed as each house is constructed and have part of the landscape allowance for each house be applied to a landscape area along the property line, which is, which is a little different from what is suggested, I think, in the two emails that we received in public comment. And then the other comment to address is for backyards. There's a request to limit what can be done in the backyards of the homes. Since this is a horizontal property regime, there's not really technically a backyard as you'd see with, if, if the lot lines were there, but we understand what the, the point is of that. But we'd like to leave that open to what fits in that space according to the code minimums that the city already has. Some of the lots, well, it's one lot, but some of the homes have a very small backyard where there'd not be room to put any structures or hardscape features back there, but some of them do have a big enough area that we'd like that to remain as an option.
So how far is that setback from the tree line or from the property line?
Our, our structure setback, house setback, is either 20 feet for most of the property or 10 feet at the cul-de-sac area in the back. And then we're, we're planning on using at least 10 feet of that for the extensive, more extensive landscaping that we're going to provide with the, with each house as it's constructed.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Anyone else? Thank you. All right, we'll open up our public hearing. Anyone for, against, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Melissa Meyer at 2130 Patriot Drive. I'm, we're one of five properties that are just shy of an acre that run alongside the proposed property, the proposed subdivision. We are on the Patriot Drive side, obviously, down from Oakland High School. On our side, where the fence exists, there are no mature trees on that side. There are mature trees on the other side, which is the Lovelace Development that went in. And then on the end where the cul-de-sac is, there are mature trees on that side, but there are none along our property line, other than, you know, a few trees that exist in our own backyards. So we've been there 18 years. It's been, obviously, open the entire time up to the last couple of years when the landowner passed and then it was sold off. We were assured it was going to be a single family, maintained as a single-family property. A fence went up, which is fine, and they assured that they would put in mature trees to, you know, to give a buffer for our property, our backyard property lines for our five houses. And, and then it changed over to it would be 12 hamases. And now we're, that became 17 and now we're at, what, 34, 35? So we're very concerned. It's very, it is very quiet in our backyards and we've had no lights back there. Now we have a single street light, you know, that shines into our backyard. So we're, we're concerned primarily about noise, having zero lot-line houses immediately, you know, at the, at the back of our property line and the noise, the lights, you know, all of those elements. So we have concerns about that and certainly about maybe safeguarding and ensuring that there are mature, you know, there are trees that are planted on that backside, which butts up to our houses on Patriot Drive, those five lots. So those are our concerns that we have. It's, the size has doubled and doubled again and so we've been here 18 years. We moved from Miami to Florida for a reason. And we've quite enjoyed, we love Murfreesboro and we've quite enjoyed where we've been and have no plan on, plans on, you know, moving. But we're extremely concerned about the quantity of properties that are going to be in our backyard and that there is no buffer and there's zero lot lines, so they're going to be right up on that fence conceivably, so.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Anyone else? Not, we're closed the public hearing. Staff? Donald?
Thank you, sir. I think the landscaping is probably going to be the, the concern maybe. Mr. Gordon, do you want to address the, sort of the gaps in the landscaping and how those would be accommodated?
As far as the landscaping, she is correct. On her side, the, there's scattered trees and they're not anywhere near as big as the ones on the Lovelace subdivision side. And that's part of why we want to be able to use the landscape allocation with each house to design separately for each need. On the Lovelace side, there's already existing mature trees, so we can put that landscaping into lower trees that will take up the space in between what's out there. But on her side, on the north side, we can use a different layout that will include some shorter and taller, different types of vegetation in that, in that landscape area.
When would that landscape be put in, I guess is the question?
We are proposing that as each house is built, that's when the landscaping for that part would go in. It would be part of each house's building plan.
What level buffer are you proposing?
Uh, well, we...
Yeah, what level? C, D?
We haven't said it in terms of a buffer. We're planning to do 10 feet of landscaping and so far, that's what we've discussed. So we haven't said specifically like a C buffer, which would be one of the lower levels of buffer, but, which I think is 12 feet with different possibilities of, of plant material.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
So will this, just for me to understand a little more clearly about the zoning on this, will this be, like right now, at number one, it just looks as if it is sitting on common area land and the unit will be sold, not the land around it? Is it going to be its own specific lot? Will it be a lot one on Poplar Court?
It would not. It will be one, one lot of record and then each house will be what is sold with the horizontal property regime or condominium-style sales. Then all of the common space area is maintained by the homeowners' association. So that includes the areas that we've shown specifically as common space, but also the yards for each house.
So basically, it, it, the, the landscaping that you're talking about would be put in as each home is built, but it would be consistent because it is going to be the, the homeowners' association that owns it all, correct? And maintains it all, not each individual lot owner, correct?
That's correct. Homeowners' Association would maintain all of it. It would be installed originally with each house.
So, so basically, if, if there's going to be landscaping there, you're just not wanting to have to put it all in at once. You want to put it in as each home is built and sold.
That's correct.
What about the continuity of the growth of that, that buffer or that, that landscape? You, you, you might build three units and then six months, a year later? So each, each time we're building a unit, that's when we're putting in the landscape, correct?
That's correct.
So what about the continuity of the growth of the landscape?
That's, that's a good question because we'll have, you know, we're, we're certainly hoping that we'll have a quick turnover of all those homes. But even with a quick turnover, you're still looking at, you know, over a year, year and a half, two years to get the whole project done. So what we might be able to do is talk about the, the matching level of landscaping behind each, each one.
So is staff okay with this?
I, I honestly think that we would prefer to see the perimeter landscaping installed at, at one time, if that's at all possible. The other idea that Matthew just presented is that they can definitely bring us a more detailed landscape plan as we move, if, if this moves forward to the city council, we can take, take a more detailed plan to them. But I think that the continuity issue is, is a pretty big concern, especially if you do have a two or three-year gap in, in when those houses are constructed. There'll be some mature growth here and, and not here. So I think that's definitely something to consider.
Also, Donald, when we're talking about, Ms. Meyer stated they had no trees on their side. Could we work on maybe trying to get a buffer or something in place immediately for that side?
We definitely could because this is essentially single-family, abutting, single-family. There's, there's not a required buffer, per se, but that's definitely something you can include in your recommendation.
Mr. Gordon?
I do think, you know, just to point out, I mean, that they do have acre lots. It's not, you know, we're not right on top of each other, but I do still think we need some consistent landscaping throughout the whole project, no matter how close or how far, you know, one house might be on this side versus that side. You know, I'd hate to require a whole lot more over on that side and then this side that's, the, the homes are actually much closer than they are over here on the acre lots, just because they're long, skinny acres. You know, I, I just think it ought to be consistent for the development.
Mr. Gordon, I think what you're hearing from the commission is we'd like to see all the development go in at one time as far as the trees and the landscaping.
Right. I think we can do that if, if we have to make that happen.
Well, and then you'll have to have a, like, when is one time? Is it when the last house is built or is it when the, you know, twen-, you know, 15th house, you know?
Agree. I think that's something that staff, I think staff can work out.
Yeah, if, if you decide to go ahead and forward this today to the city council, we can definitely work with the applicant and probably have an updated pattern book prepared for the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. All right, what's the wishes of the commission? Any discussion?
Ma'am, you just get one time, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions or discussion, I, I would make a motion for approval, subject to working out the landscaping with the staff before it moves on to city council.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Approved. Zoning application for approximately 43.2 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Long Road to be rezoned RS-15 to CH. George Pratt Hood, applicant.
Thank you, Chairman Wade. Our next item for public hearing tonight is a zoning request from RS-15 to Commercial Highway. It's approximately 43.2 acres located at the, on the northern side of the interchange of Veterans Parkway and I-840. This is a property that was actually just annexed a couple of months ago, or maybe even not that much, not that long ago. It was annexed with the, the West Park property, which is located just to the east of the subject property. On the, on the map in front of you, you can see that the, the city limits are colored in kind of the yellowish-beige color and the subject property... in kind of the yellowish-beige color, and the subject property is, is colored in orange. The property came in with an interim zoning classification into the city of RS fifteen, single-family residential fifteen, in anticipation of that, a zoning request moving forward shortly after annexation of the property. The, the applicants, the property owners, are kind of a conglomeration of family members at the Hordes and the McCullas, and as you can see by the fact that we have five zoning applications, they all, they all signed separate zoning applications, and they have all requested commercial highway zoning for the property. This property is to the north of property that was recently zoned Commercial Highway on the south side of the intersection of Veterans Parkway and I forty, and you'll actually see this label here, RS fifteen. Don't think that's actually gone into effect, but very recently, the city council passed on second reading the rezoning of the McDonald property to Commercial Highway. So that is now Commercial Highway, and the applicants have made a request for the, the same zoning designation. As I mentioned, directly to the east of the subject property is land that's zoned P, Park Zone, for the development of the West Park, which is rapidly advancing and moving towards, towards design and construction. The city council has put a high priority on that, on the development of that park project. To the north of the subject property are two lots that were annexed at the same time that are currently zoned interim RS fifteen. They were annexed with the Park property as well. As I mentioned, to the south of the subject property is the Veterans Parkway-I-eight-forty interchange. The future land use map and the Murphysboro twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, which has not yet been adopted, but just as a reminder, we have a public hearing scheduled for the Murphysboro twenty thirty-five plan for our next Planning Commission night meeting on July twelfth. So just as a reminder for everybody's calendars, the comprehensive plan shows the east side of the subject property, and the subject property is bisected by Veterans Parkway as being recommended for business park, and the western portion is recommended for suburban residential. It should be noted, though, that the map was drafted prior to the city's purchase of the property that is planned to be developed with the West Park. It is staff's opinion that the West Park has changed the dynamics of this interchange and that the recommendations of the future land use map are no longer applicable. Staff expects that the park will draw regional traffic and that it will necessitate the development of additional interchange-oriented commercial uses on both sides of the interstate. The proposed CH zone for the property that will put in place the zoning to enable the commercial development on both sides of the interchange. With that being said, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then discuss the matter and then formulate a recommendation to the city council, and Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here representing the, the owners of the property. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Roundtree.
Chairman Wade, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I am here representing the Horde family and the applicants, and I'm available for any questions you may have. But as Matthew said, we, we have discussed it with the city staff and feel like the CH zoning is the most appropriate zoning adjacent to the park. Really don't have any anticipation of what may actually go there, but it is consistent with the perimeter zoning around the park, so that's why we chose to go with the CH zone. So I'm available for any questions if you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Public hearing is now open. Anyone want to speak for or against, please come forward. Public hearing is now closed. What's the wishes of the commission?
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve subject to any and all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Approved.
Annexation, annexation plan that serves annexation petition for approximately four-hundred linear feet, Emery Road right-of-way, City of Murphysboro Engineering Department applicant.
Thank you, Chairman Wade. Our next item is the annexation of the four-hundred linear foot strip of Emery Road right-of-way. Emery Road is the, the road that, that Osborne Lane turn, terminates into on its, on its eastern boundary. It's just a little bit to the west of Last Cass's Pike, and many of you might be familiar with the, with the hard ninety-degree turn if you're taking a shortcut from Last Cass's Pike over to Osborne Lane. The adjacent property on the corner of Osborne Lane and Emery Road, and so if you'll follow me on the map, this area right here was annexed into the city in two thousand and six, but the right-of-way of Emery Road directly in front of the subject property was left in the unincorporated county. Since that time, Planning Commission approved a two-lot subdivision plat for two residential lots on this property. The houses on those two lots are under construction, and they'll both have driveways to Emery Road. In addition, the, as a, as a condition of that plat approval, the applicant was required to dedicate right-of-way, and so five feet of, of those two lots was dedicated, or of that property was dedicated as right, or, as right-of-way, and that five feet being already in the city limits. So you have a portion of the right-of-way that's, that's in the city and a portion that's in the county. You'll have two driveways from those two lots that will be going from a lot that's in the city onto a county road, and you have a church there on the corner that has a driveway onto Emery Road as well. In addition, the Emery Road right-of-way to the south of the subject property is in the city limits as well. And so for these reasons, we feel it's appropriate to annex this four-hundred-foot strip of Emery Road right-of-way, and so our engineering department and, in consultation with the planning department, has brought forth this, this annexation request. We have a plan of services in the, in the agenda packet. With it only being right-of-way, it'll be a relatively easy annexation to effect, and of course, the roadway itself, the city engineering department and streets division would take responsibility for as far as, as far as maintenance and, and repaving, whenever, whenever repaving would be warranted. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to the annexation of this, of this right-of-way, and Mr. Sam Huddleston with our engineering department is here, if you have any questions for him. Mr. Huddleston and his department are listed as the applicants on this, on this application.
All right, let's open up our public hearing. All right, let's close up public hearing. All right.
What's the wishes of the commission?
Uh, Mr. Huddleston, see here?
Yeah.
Evening.
I'm looking at Google Maps, and certainly it, it could be very old Google Maps, but, Emery Road, that whole neighborhood appears to have sidewalks except for the Emery Road part. Is, is there, with the annexation of this roadway, would there automatically be the assumption that there'll be sidewalks added on that side of Emery Road?
I think it's probably not automatic assumption, Mr. Smotherman. The road is a substandard street, doesn't meet, meaning it's not, not unsafe or anything, but it doesn't meet the city standard for residential streets by having curb and gutter and sidewalk. For the developer of Pebble Creek, which is immediately south of this property, we collected fees in lieu of construction, and for the two lots that Mr. Blomley mentioned in his opening remarks, we also collected fees in lieu of, and so we have a longer-term plan to see Osborne Lane extended and see roadway improvements, but, but it, it wouldn't be an expectation that we'd have sidewalk on it upon annexation, but upon future roadway improvements in the area.
As the road is developed, it will have sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. That was my assumption. Thank you, Sam.
Yes, I think, Mr. Smotherman, we, we've been before you on several similar situations, Shores Road, perhaps, East Overall Creek Road, and, and the, the issue that, that we face when we abut existing two-lane roads, existing substandard street, whether they're built in the city or, or built in the county and then annexed into the city is, is, is having the opportunity to, to work on and upgrade those, the complications.
Part of the roadway is in the city, though.
Part of it is today, that's correct. When we, when we, when we, the city annexed the property that is now Pebble Creek, we included the right-of-way of Emery Road in that annexation recommendation, and I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure why we didn't on this one, except that I think Mr. Blomley discovered that it was an added study area to an annexation request.
It, it took me a long time to figure out with what property this was annexed, because it was actually, there's a piece of property on the north side of Compton Road. Yeah, I said that right, Compton Road, way detached from this property. And we studied a large area, additional study area, back when we could annex additional study areas, and what, the only additional study area that we ended up annexing was the, what is to the, at the southwest corner of the intersection of Osborne and Emery, and that was in two thousand and six. And we are trying to be pretty uniform in, now in our policy of, of including the adjacent rights-of-way in our, in our annexation studies and plans of services, whereas we weren't always as, as uniform in including those back, back, back in the day, in two thousand and six, around that time.
But it, it does split our jurisdiction, and it makes it tough, the, between the owner, developer, and the, the city and the county, come to the city for a building permit and CUD for a water tap, and city for sewer tap, and then county for a permission to connect to the road, and so I think Matthew stated pretty well that we think it'd be consistent to have that all under one jurisdiction in the future as we look at those annexation areas, and this will give us the opportunity to, to, to include this part in, in our city street network and have jurisdiction be one authority in the city of Murphysboro. And, and so you have seen several of those requests, the engineering department is the applicant, and, and this one's a similar request.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Anyone else?
In that case, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? As of it. Hudson Carey.
PSO amendment for approximately seventy point seven acres to amend the St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital PSO, St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital applicant.
Ms. Kerr.
Good evening, Chairman Wade, members of the Planning Commission. St. Thomas Rutherford is located at seventeen hundred eight, eighteen forty Medical Center Parkway, which is located in a light industrial and a GDO three zone, and is approximately seventy point seven acres. In nine, in two thousand and eight, the hospital received approval for a PSO, which is a plan sign overlay, that is a, basically for a large commercial development of twenty acres or more, they have basically their own sign ordinance for that particular development. Anytime there's a request to make a change in a PSO, in the existing size of a sign or increase the number of signs, there has to be an amendment to the PSO, because this property is within the GDO three zone, it must receive approval from the DRC committee, is, also has to get approval from Planning Commission and city council approval. The hospital is requesting an amendment to their existing PSO to add two forty-two-square-foot signs reading St. Thomas Heart, and they're going to go on the existing MOB two building, which is also known as the Seaton Building. These signs may be seen in your package on page of the PSO amendment that you have in there on page G two point one four A, and the sign number is number nine. One sign will be installed on the front of the, of the Seaton Building or the west elevation, and one will be installed on the south elevation or the right elevation. These signs will be constructed in accordance with the current PSO, the sign ordinance, and the DRC guidelines and regulations for materials and size will be utilized. The DRC approved the request at its meeting held on May seventeenth, and myself or Mr. Jim Harding with Gresham Smith are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Any questions? Ms. Kerr? All right, let's open up our public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone? Public hearing is now closed. Commission?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve subject to any and all staff comments.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion approved.
Zoning application for approximately six point eleven acres located along Jackson Allen Drive and Susannah Lanin Drive to be rezoned from PCD to PRD, the Villas at Regal Square, PRD, Land Questor LLC applicant.
Thank you, Chairman Wade. Our next public hearing is in the Regal Square PCD. It's the area on the map before you that is colored in blue. It consists of eleven existing lots, I believe it's eleven, it's actually twelve, I can count. My Auburn education is serving me well. The, these lots are zoned right now for office and specialty shops. They are, they were developed about seven or eight years ago, perhaps even longer, and they've remained vacant. As we've seen kind of citywide, the zoning that's specific to offices, we have many instances in town where, where land that's zoned OG, Office General, is just kind of sitting out there languishing, and zoning that is specifically for offices appears to be coming, to becoming less and less viable, as many of those office uses are looking to go in areas that have other commercial, you know, retail and restaurant uses as well. So these lots have, have sat there undeveloped for a number of years, and the applicants have submitted an application to rezone the property from PCD, the current Regal Square PCD, to PRD for the Villas at Regal Square, PRD. And what they would hope to do if they're approved is to develop a forty-two-unit, single-family attached development with a density of six point eight seven dwelling units per acre. All homes will be sold via a horizontal property regime, and they will all have three bedrooms, two-car garages, and a minimum of sixteen hundred square feet of living area. Exterior materials will include brickstone and fiber cement siding. We wanted to make sure that the exterior materials were generally consistent with the, with the exterior materials that were part of the approved PCD, and those were generally masonry materials that I mentioned just a moment ago, brickstone, fiber cement siding, which we usually lump in with the mason, masonry materials. The site exceeds minimum parking requirements and, and even makes provisions for thirty-two guest parking spaces. Amenities will include a dog park, a playground, and a pavilion, and solid waste will be managed via a private hauler. The surrounding land uses to the, to the west of the subject property at the intersection of Jackson Allen Drive and Memorial Boulevard are actually four lots, the only four lots in the subdivision that have been developed. On the corner, there's a two-unit building with a dentist office and a, and a real estate office, and on the other corner, there's a veterinarian, a veterinary clinic, there's another small office building and a daycare center. All those developed lots, as you can tell, are closer to Memorial Boulevard where the greater visibility and accessibility is. To the northwest of the subject property across Cedar View Drive is a legally established non-conforming mobile home park that's zoned Commercial Highway. Directly to the north of the subject property along Cedar View Drive are two single-family residences on large lots, and there's another large lot, single-family residence zoned RS fifteen to the east of the subject property. To the south of the subject property, or excuse me, to the southeast of the subject property is the Crown Point. property is the Crown Point Single Family Residential Subdivision, which is zoned RS twelve. And to the south of the subject property are several large RS fifteen zone tracks that have frontage on Osborne Lane. And just to kind of give you, um, a snapshot of, um, the area, uh, the Suzanne Landon Drive, we would anticipate actually going both to the north and to the south. And, uh, eventually Suzanne Landon Drive, we would anticipate that it would, uh, go all, it'd be extended south all the way to Osborne Lane and it will be extended to the north. Um, it is our, our anticipation, at some point in the future, if and when the two, uh, lots to the north develop, uh, we would expect that Suzanne Landon Drive would be, would be, uh, extended north to the Brookhaven, um, commercial subdivision that's under development right now, where the local restaurant, uh, would be, uh, would, is proposed to be located. So with that being said, I'll, uh, ask Mr. Roundtree to come up here. He is representing the applicants and he has a brief PowerPoint presentation on the proposed development that he would like to give.
Thank you, Matthew. Fire this thing up here. Oops. Yes, my name's Clyde Roundtree, Listless Steel Engineering, Chairman Wade, Commissioners, staff. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present this project. This is one that I, I'm very excited about. I'm excited about all my projects, but this one has some unique characteristics that, that I think are really, really neat. So I just wanna say that, because I'm, I'm proud of this, uh, representing this particular project. I think Mr. Gillian, that I'm representing, um, with Lanquest Developers has picked a wonderful site. And really, I, I'm always impressed by the developers here have eyes to see. I mean, this is a kind of a lot that's been there for a long time. I think a lot of people have driven by them many times and, and several eyes got a hold of this one and, and Mr. Gillland's the one who's gonna actually get to take advantage of it. So with that in mind, just wanna kind of walk you through the general idea. Um, let me just find, go back. I'm sorry, I'm a little ahead of myself. As Matthew said, the site currently is basically a vacant lot. The roads develop, uh, Jackson Allen, or I prefer to call it Allen Jackson, um, Drive. Uh, as Matthew knows, he worked with me on that one. And Suzanne Landing are both existing streets, they're public streets. Um, they're very nicely kept, good shape, curb and gutter. Um, so it has a really interesting appearance and, so with that in mind, I think the subdivision we're proposing, the townhomes we're proposing will be a really nice fit in this particular application on this land. So, again, that's one of the reasons I'm very excited about this particular project. How can I go backwards? As far as, uh, that's current conditions, as I said, fairly level land. Um, but I do wanna bring attention to the existing buffers along the property lines. They're, they're well-established all the way around the perimeter of the site. Um, I think the neighbor to the east has actually a double row of, of large trees established. Um, wonderful piece of property they have behind this one in particular. And that's kind of shown in that bottom slide on the right-hand corner, um, as well as just the fact that the established trees, we, we do anticipate keeping those in place during the construction process, make sure they're protected, and hopefully, uh, kind of mitigate some more buffer concerns. But I think it's nice to be able to have that kind of established trees around our perimeter. This is the site plan, um, that's been worked through with Mr. Gillian and the city staff. And really, the, what I'm, what I'm very excited about in this particular situation is it's all rear-entry garages. And I think we're gonna be able to address the road on Jackson Allen Drive very, very nicely, as well as Suzanne Landing. Um, the, the homes will be kind of justified towards the front of the property, a little bit more intimate scale to the roadway. And, um, and then obviously no, no driveways to have to worry about. So I think just the walkways, sidewalks, the, uh, the aesthetics of the homes will really lend itself towards a very nice and comfortable development. Just some of the highlights of the actual plan, as Matthew said, there's forty-two units we're proposing, the minimum square footage is sixteen hundred square feet. There are three bedroom units and there's, they are rear-entry garages that have the capability of two cars. And in this particular floor plan, we've actually accommodated a physical space for the trash containers. So, another neat feature of this, so it'll be a privately hauled, uh, trash sewer disposal, I mean, trash disposal. And, uh, there will be room for two additional cars in the driveways behind the homes. Um, and as, uh, as the staff is encouraging us to do, there is ample parking associated with this project, thirty-two extra spaces, most of them weighted towards the playground facility, but also distributed around the project so, uh, guests of the property can have a place to park. These, this is just a, uh, architectural rendering that kind of talks a little bit about the architectural character. There's another render on the next slide. But as, as been a concern of the Planning Commission, um, anytime a home, uh, a side of the home faces a public right-of-way, that bottom left-hand sketch there, uh, shows you that we anticipate wrapping the porches around the corner of the structure. Any buildings on that side, uh, any windows on that side of the building will have shutters with the, really, the intention is to make it look as much as possible as a front and really address the public right-of-way. Landscaping will go around the side of the building as well, so we wanna make sure that it has a really nice aesthetic appearance from the public right-of-way. The homes have, um, you know, our typical materials, it's all masonry. Uh, there'll be a combination of brick and stone, as well as hardy board or cement board. It has varying roof lines, I know that's a, a quality we're really looking forward in the city. In this particular project, the dormers will be varied as well. There'll be both gip and, uh, gable and shed dormers. There'll be porches on the front of the homes with, with columns. And again, if you can imagine that picture, putting that home quite a bit off the road, these will be addressing the street a lot more favorably in terms of closer. And along with the homes, we have some streetscape that we plan on, you know, some street trees we plan on, um, planting as well. So with the sidewalks, the close proximity of the homes to the road with the street trees, I think it's really gonna have an intimate scale and really no parking out front. So that's why I get excited. Again, the only thing I'd add to that is just, I think it's kind of a very upscale appearance. And with that, I wanna compliment the owners of the businesses along, uh, Jackson Allen Drive. Those are beautiful businesses. And unique to this piece of property, those businesses actually have a residential scale. They're not, you know, one on the corner is more of your traditional commercial kind of boxy-looking structure. But the veterinary clinic, the childcare center, basically look like large residences. So I think scale-wise, our townhomes are gonna fit in very nicely with the existing businesses at the entrance of, um, Allen Jackson, or Jackson Allen Drive. Um, as far as landscaping's concerned, I've already mentioned that there'll be foundation planting around the sides of the building, but that'll also extend along the front of the building as well. And then we'll have street trees, as mentioned, and then preserving the natural buffer that exists along the property lines. And with all of our developments, we're really trying to make sure that there's a, you know, there's a human interaction portion. I think I witnessed something for the first time where something, someone on a commercial fringe versus a residence, um, residential zoning, but, you know, for the purpose of community. But a lot of our developments are counting on these pavilions and dog parks and playground areas to foster community. And I think the villages at Regal Square will be very consistent with that approach. And with that in mind, I, I just think it's gonna be a successful development. I think it's gonna be unique. I think it's gonna be well-done. Uh, I, I, I love the feeling and the scale that's about to be represented in this area. I think it's appropriate for the location. I think access is great off of, uh, Memorial Boulevard. And I, again, I think we've picked a winner on this one, so I'm excited about seeing it move forward. And I'm available for any questions you may have. Mr. Gillian is here as well, if you have any questions of him. But again, thank you for hearing our, uh, desire to move the villages of Regal Square forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Any questions for Mr. Roundtree before we start our public hearing? Thank you.
Let's open up a public hearing now.
Lower this a bit. Hi, I'm Matt Bauer. My wife Beth and I, we live to the east. We have five acres. Um, we've been there about forty years, but of course, the city is growing very rapidly and I don't need to tell you all these stories about how much it's growing. You all know that. And, uh, we know that because there's apartments going on the Brooks Gerald property and that's being developed. And of course, this is a, um, a nice, uh, townhome development that's going adjacent to our property. Um, our problem is the, our lack of access to our property. A couple of years ago, we had an offer from a group out of Chicago for a, a senior community, but the problem was the access to it. They didn't like the road to it. They took one look finally, I think they used aerial views, but when they finally came down to look at it, they could see it was very poor. And that's because Cedar View is a very, it's a, um, a substandard road, as the engineering department has called it. And they also told me there's no, um, no plans to upgrade this. Uh, that's my difficulty. I don't know if there's anything you can do to help me out on this, but eventually we would like to, uh, move on. We have a daughter in Knoxville that, uh, we have grandchildren and we'd probably want to get rid of this property so we can, uh, get it developed some type of, uh, more than just residential, since it is five acres. I don't know if you all have any suggestions for that, but, uh, I know Matthew had mentioned the, um, road which would go out to Osborne, which would also help the developer of the Regal Square area. That would be great, but I understand it has to be developed first. The developer has to put the road in. Um, I don't think y'all can perform miracles on that, but that'd be great. I don't know if you have any suggestions, uh, that's always, I'd be certainly, um, very happy to hear that. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
My name is Pamela Merton and I live on the other, uh, across this, uh, I live on Seaton, one eighty-seventh Cedar View Drive. And my concern is when y'all start developing that Susanna Road, that's gonna go through my property. So I was just wondering how, when y'all thought something like that might be, uh, brought up, 'cause that's my, you know, tour, I live next to the Brooks Gerald property. I've lived there forty-two years. So I was just, I've been concerned about when y'all go through my property with the new road and stuff like that. And, uh, I know the city's gonna grow, so I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merton.
My name is Nelson Bowen. I live at one seventy-three Cedar View. Um, I suppose my main concern is trying to get out on Memorial Road. Uh, it's very dangerous there and, and, you know, even when I pull up there, there's nobody there trying to get out in front of me. It's very difficult to go back toward town. You have some, a lot of people in the morning coming in trying to get into the daycare. And so I'm trying to fight the turning lane and the, and the lane going right and the lane going left. It's just quite difficult. Uh, do you know if there's gonna be, uh, a light proposed to be at that corner or not? Now that we're gonna have another forty or fifty people coming in, going, uh, to work and back and forth in the morning, back and forth in the evenings? It's very dangerous right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Anyone else?
Not, let's close our public hearing. Seth?
Thank you, Chairman Wade. And, um, uh, first to address, uh, Mr. Bauer's concerns and, and, um, I've been here almost sixteen years and I think I've been talking to Mr. Bauer on the phone for about sixteen years. He's been, but I, I know Mr. Bauer well. Um, and, and I think that one of the key components of if any of those three large tracts on Cedar View Drive, if a development plan is submitted for any of those three tracks, it will take some improvements to Cedar View Drive. And typically, the way that, um, the city, uh, would handle a situation like that is that the developer would be required to participate in, in upgrades to a substandard road or to escrow. And in this case, or to, or to pay fees in lieu of, in this case, um, I think that the improvements would likely be required at, uh, at the, uh, time of development because, because Cedar View is, is, uh, really kind of a, a substandard former, former county road. And, and as Mr. Huddleston said, substandard is not necessarily an unsavory term, it just means that it's not constructed to current city standards. Uh, but, you know, of course, this property is zoned RS fifteen and, um, you know, certainly if there were a potential rezoning of that property, we would, um, bring in our engineering and transportation departments and review, uh, what public infrastructure improvements would be needed, um, to accommodate a development of that property and, and also what zoning would be appropriate for that property. I, I, at this point, I don't know that I'm prepared to say what, what zoning would be appropriate for that property. Uh, with regards to Ms. Merton, um, the, our, our plan is, at some point, we would like to see that connection from the Brookhaven property, which the Brooks, Brooks Gerald property, to Suzanne Landing. Of course, it's her property now, she lives there. I think what we would expect would be that the, that connection would be, would be constructed as a function of the development of her property. If she ever sold her property to a developer and the developer, um, uh, one of the expectations would be that if that property develops, that that road would be extended at that time. And likewise, to the south, the property on, um, on Osborne Lane, um, is developed, we would expect that that roadway to be extended to Osborne Lane at that time. Um, and there, you know, and I can't say if there would be an instance where, um, where we would, uh, try to move forward with the construction of a roadway, uh, before development occurs, but, but our standard protocol would be to have the roadway constructed with, with development. With regards to Mr. Bowen's question regarding getting out onto Memorial, I take, um, my four-legged friend Barclay to that veterinarian's office to board, so I can, I can definitely relate to the fact that it is difficult to turn left out of there at, at peak hours. Um, I'd like to invite Mr. Balachandra to come to the podium and discuss what, uh, signalization improvements may be, uh, may be foreseen in the future for this particular intersection, as well as others in the nearby vicinity on Memorial Boulevard.
Good evening, Chair, Chairman Wade and members of the Planning Commission. Currently, we do not have any, uh, signalization plans for the intersection of, uh, Regal Drive, uh, Allen Jackson, um, and Memorial. Uh, we will monitor the traffic as the, as the development happens on, uh, Allen Jackson Drive and make a petition when we feel that the traffic volumes will meet the, uh, volume criteria for a traffic signal. Uh, but as you, as, uh, Matthew was alluding to, we did set up, uh, the Allen Jackson connection to, to line up with Regal Drive for that reason, so that the numbers on the side street, uh, will meet the volume criteria for signalization.
Permission?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if there's no, uh, further questions, um, I think it looks like a, a nice project for that property and, uh, something positive out of something that's just been, uh, sitting there for a while, so I would make a motion to approve, subject to any and all staff comments.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carried and approved.
Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding section four, comprehensive plan and procedure, city of Murfreesboro, planning and legal department applicant.
Thank you, Chairman Wade. As I mentioned earlier, reminder, reminder, uh, we have our public hearing for the Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan coming up on July the twelfth at our seven PM Planning Commission meeting. Um, in, um, preparation for that meeting, uh, we were researching the section of our zoning ordinance that deals with the comprehensive plan and the procedure for adopting it. And we found that it's, uh, it's a little bit out of date, um, including the actual term comprehensive plan. State law actually uses the term general plan. So in addition to, um, revising the name of the, of the section from comprehensive plan and procedure to general plan and procedure, uh, we are also, um, making it consistent with state law in other aspects as well. And just to kind of give you an idea of the, the vintage of our, of this section, our current zoning ordinance was adopted in nineteen eighty-four. This section has essential- to make it as consistent as possible with state law in anticipation of our, our July 12th public hearing. And so we've actually, considering the fact that we have a July 12th public hearing, we've actually got this on the city council's agenda for next Thursday to consider on first reading and, and public hearing that night as well. So we need to conduct a public hearing on this ordinance amendment and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. All right, let's open up our public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Lewis, did you have something to say? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Permission? Mr. Wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval. All staff comment?
Second.
Have a, have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries. Any staff comments?
I have none.
Why, Chair, I have none.
Nothing here.
All right. Planning Commission is now over.